Good evening. It's 6:31 on January 23, 19... or 19, 2024. It's been a long day. I'm calling this session of the Bastrop City Council to order. City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. And I will alert everybody, we are going to take advantage of that caveat. Want to welcome all of y'all here tonight. We are very pleased to have hopefully two young ladies, but I know we have one young lady here, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have, bear with me, Eva Maryam and Ashley Koppion. Please come on up. If you're by yourself, we'll start with... Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance... I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let's give Eva a round of applause. Now Eva, turn around. He's going to take a picture of you to memorialize this. Eva, thank you so much. Thank you. If you'll remain standing, we're going to ask Reverend Dale Burke to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, it's a great honor to come here and pray tonight for a great city. Lord, a growing city. And Lord, we thank you for the turnout tonight. Where people coming tonight will have a voice in our city government. And Lord, we thank you for each council member, the mayor, the city manager, and each council member here. Lord, it's a privilege for them to serve, and so we stand behind them. Lord, that they have one purpose, to serve this city well. So Lord, I thank you that they walk with integrity in all that they do. And Lord, I thank you that you give them wisdom and discernment tonight as they consider every decision that's being made at the growth of this city. We thank you, Lord, for your blessings upon this city as we continue to grow and develop. And Lord, each part has its place. We thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Burke. You may be seated. Council, as I stated earlier, we're going to change it around a little bit. We're going to move immediately to our city manager's report. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city manager report is actually a very condensed version. We are going to be presenting the awards for the Christmas parade, which I'm sure many of you are here for. So I'm going to hand it over to the mayor, who will list out the names and will actually present the awards. I can call them out if you'd like to give me the list, and you can hand them out. Thank you.
The city manager and I are going to kind of tag team on this.
Bottom up or up? Let me check the first name to tell me if I'm calling bottom up.
Don't you love when plans come together?
I do. I do. All right. First place overall, Lost Pines, Best Lost Pines Christmas Entry. First choice, Bastrop County Animal Shelter.
Do we have anybody here from the animal shelter? Well, we'll make sure we get this to them.
Yep. Second choice, RDO Equipment Company.
Do we have anybody from RDO Equipment Company?
Third choice, Lazy Age Cowboy Company. Yay!
Congratulations. Congratulations. You got here early. I've got something for you.
Yeah.
Here, this is y'all.
I set the bar. Second category, Most Beautiful Lighted Float. First choice goes to Parabec Plumbing. Parabec Plumbing here, yay!
Come on. You got the shirt and everything. Just take a picture.
Thank you. Third category, Third, Best Pedestrian Group. City of Bastrop Baliex Dancers.
We know somebody's here.
I expect the Bali dance, like, right up front.
Wow.
Wow.
Come on. Come on. Who's the leader of this group? There you are. Y'all gather in. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mr. Burke.
All right. Fourth category, Most Original Entry. Fantastic Paints and Performance Construction. Yay!
Outstanding. Congratulations. Congratulations. Come on. Y'all get in here. This is y'all's picture, not me.
Awesome.
This is yours. Thank y'all. You betcha.
Category number five, Best Marching Band. The Cedar Creek Marching Band. Yay!
Indeed, you're here. Congratulations. Here's this to y'all. Turn around.
Awesome. Thank you. Category number six, Best Car Group. Lower Colorado Jeepers.
Good. I'm glad you're here. Congratulations. Let's take a picture over here.
Awesome. Group number seven, Best Group Entry. Colony Oaks Elementary.
There you are.
Yay!
Come on. One of y'all hold this. One of y'all hold that. Thank you. Thank you.
Best Emergency Vehicle Decoration. Must be a vehicle for law enforcement, fire department, EMS, et cetera. The winner is the Bastrop Fire Department. I think we're kind of biased. I think we're kind of biased.
He makes grand entries.
Yes. All right. Category number nine, The Best Cyclist Decoration. The winner is The Hair Studio.
We'll make sure they get their award.
All right. Number 10, The Best Reason for the Season Entry goes to Flames of Glory Cowboy Church.
Who wants to hold it? Congratulations. Y'all get in. Gather.
Awesome. Thank you so much to all the participants and the winners.
Let's give everybody a round of applause. It was a fantastic Christmas parade. We appreciate everybody's participation, whether you were a participant or observer. As stated earlier, we have a couple of items that we need to take care of. We're going to move to executive session. It should not take us too very long. But we're going to move to executive session, which would be item 10A. City Council shall convene in the closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding possible real estate acquisitions related to the African-American Cultural Center and Freedom's Colony... Colonies Museum. It is 6:41. The council is now in executive session. It is 6:58. Council is out of executive session and returned to regular session. On the item on which we went into executive session, I believe we have some action. I will entertain a motion.
I motion to direct staff to work on a comprehensive master plan and lease agreement for the Bastrop County African-American Cultural Center and Freedom Colonies Museum.
Second?
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland and a second from Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes. Thank you, Council. We appreciate it. I think this is going to be great for our community. Now let's try to return back to our... Y'all can go ahead and clap. Normally, I would frown on this at a business meeting, but it deserved a round of applause. Thank you so much. In the mayor's report, I have just a couple of things I want to mention. Everybody should be aware, and there's a couple of people in the audience that definitely are aware, of our Bastrop's first Mardi Gras celebration that will be occurring February 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, starting off with the Farm Street Opry with the Cajun theme. I believe Mayor Protem Kirkland will be emceeing that. They'll have a Cajun band, as well as, I've understood, the Jonathan's, who are a kind of a rock and roll group. So get your dancing shoes on and get ready to party. And the other thing is, is we recently had a freeze here, and I want to commend our city staff for their efforts, not only their expertise, their professionalism, but also their attitude. We had several calls, of which we discussed potential problems, real problems, and there was always a solution. I want to draw special attention to our Assistant City Manager and Fire Chief Andreas Rosales sitting in back. Yes, sir. Please stand up. Can we give... Thank you, sir. And your city staff really stepped up to the plate, so they should all be commended. If you see them, give them a pat on the back. Do any council members have a report they'd like to get?
I do, Mayor.
Councilmember Lee?
Good evening, Bastrop. So I just wanted to give a couple of kudos to a few organizations in the community tonight. The Opera House, as always, did a wonderful job with the opening of Freaky Friday this past weekend. I volunteered. Always get to volunteer, and then you get to see the show. So I got to see the show, and it was amazing. Our own Kathy Dunuson, her whole family is in that show. She has raised a talented group of individuals, so I'm very happy to see her family up there shining. Tickets are on sale, and that show runs through February the 4th. Also wanted to mention, make a mention to our Bastrop Live Music Foundation. If you guys are not aware and you love music, check out the Bastrop Live Music Foundation. A good friend of mine, Ray Prim, played last week, had me out on a school night, listening to some good music. It's an intimate setting, not loud, conversations going on, just like you see on TV. Somebody's sitting there with a guitar and singing some good music. So they're really building that foundation up and highlighting our local artists between Austin, Bastrop, Smithville, and Elgin. So if you don't have anything to do, check out their website. A lot of good music there. A couple of library updates. I do want to thank the Lost Pines Garden Club for installing birdhouses at our library. So if you... Bastrop is a Texas bird city, so they've put some birdhouses out there to enhance our environment in collaboration with the Lost Pines Garden Club. So thank you guys for all that you do. And then Saturday, January 27th, the library will be hosting an informative discussion on the Fairview Cemetery and the history of the Fairview Cemetery. Of course, that's going to be led by our Robbie Sanders, who, if you've ever listened to her do the Fairview Cemetery. I've lived here all my life, and it's just been a cemetery. It's a different experience when you hear Robbie talking about it. Makes you want to treasure the cemetery. So that's from 1 to 2 on Saturday. And then the last thing about the library, the library hours have expanded, for those of you that don't know. Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're open 12 to 9, and Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 10 to 6, and Saturday, 10 to 4. So that Tuesday and Thursday, they're seeing a lot of people coming and staying out in the library till 9 o'clock. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know, this coming Thursday at the museum at 6:30, his Texas historian, Dr. Mark Brown, is going to talk about the Old Iron Bridge, and so you don't want to miss that, because there are going to be some really good stories. They're going to be fun to hear. Also, the mayor brought up the freeze, and I want to put special thanks out to Pastor Nava at the Soup Kitchen and also the Cavalry Episcopal Church for being a warm weather shel... a cold weather shelter, rather, to go in from the cold, to stay warm for all the people who needed that. So many thanks to them.
Thank you for pointing out the partnerships. Partnerships really stepped up, and the communication was outstanding. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, on the Mardi Gras weekend, that we are having a parade that weekend. It's not... Since this is our first time doing it, everybody, all the parade float builders that are so good out there, we... It was great that we got to celebrate the ones who won for Christmas, and it'd be great to see them step up their game for Mardi Gras.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, we will move on now. We have another proclamation, and I'm going to take the occasion, since we have the president of the Bastrop County African-American Cultural Center and Freedom Colonies Museum here, I'd like to read a proclamation and have you accept it, if you will join me up at the podium. Whereas the Origins of Black History Month can be traced to the scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who created the Association of the Study of African-American Life and History in 1950, because African-Americans have played a central role in our nation's history, but for too long historians ignored or glossed over their contributions. Whereas Dr. Woodson, also known as the father of black history, conceived a yearly celebration to help rectify the omission of African-Americans from history books, and was made official by presidential designation in 1976. Whereas the Observance of Black History Month throughout the United States stands as a testament to the success, to the success of Woodson's project, an example of how we can work together to make teaching of black history more honest. Whereas African-Americans have served in all America's wars, from the American Revolution to present day. For example, during World War II, more than 2.5 million black men registered for the draft and experienced discrimination and segregation, yet served in every branch of the armed forces. 167 served in the Navy with the first 13 African-American naval officers commissioned in 1944. 17,000 served in the Marine Corps with the first African-American commission in 1945. 5,000 served in the Coast Guard with the first African-American commission in 1943, and 909,000 served in the Army. Whereas more than 12,000 black men who served in the segregated 92nd Division received citations or were decorated for extraordinary heroism on the battlefield. Perhaps more famously, the Tuskegee Airmen also became legendary for their heroic feats, in total received a distinguished unit citation, several silver stars, 150 distinguished flying crosses, 14 bronze stars, and 744 air medals. World War II was a watershed for race relationships within the armed forces. Whereas, bear with me, whereas reform was slow and was not until 1953, the first segregation officially ended, when the Secretary of Defense announced that the last all-black unit was being abolished. Whereas 40 years after military segregation ended, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, the highest military position, Department of Defense, oversaw operational desert storm in Iraq. He was an African-American named Colin L. Powell. Now therefore, I, Law Nelson, Mayor, City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the month of February 2024 as Black History Month, and along with the members of City Council, encourage all of our residents, business owners, schools, churches, and visitors to join the City of Bastrop and celebrate Black History Month. Thank y'all. Let me give this to you, and we're going to take a picture with the call. Thank you so much. Thank you. Hold on. Alright, let's move on to work sessions and briefings. We are to have a presentation from CAPCO, I'm sorry, from Campo on 150 Corridor, but I don't believe we have anybody here from Campo. Well, then, shortens our agenda by that much more. We will reach out to them and find out what transpired on that. We will now move to staff and board reports, and we'll receive a presentation on unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending September 30th. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm bringing you September's unaudited financial report. Due to accounting practices, accrual-based accounting, it takes a couple of months before we can actually report to you actuals of September. So this month, I'm bringing you two reports, and next council, I'll bring you two additional months, so that we can get caught up on our reporting. September is going to be reporting the end of the fiscal year. All funds reported positive to forecast and revenues, with the exception of impact fees. I think y'all are familiar with FY23 and impact fees, so they continuously did not meet forecast throughout the year. In regards to expenditures, all funds performed comparable to forecast, with the water fund coming in pretty close to forecast, but every other fund coming in under expenditures. Sales tax revenue for the year exceeded forecast by 2%, as well as property tax exceeded forecast by 1%. General fund expenditures by department are itemized. Overall, for the year, the expenditures to forecast was 93.8 compared to actuals, with the water coming in, the water revenue being 3.58 compared to forecast for year-end, and the expenditures coming in at 100%. The delay in the opening for the wastewater treatment plant number three had continued to plague this fund throughout the fiscal year. Utility, I'm sorry, BPNL electric fund revenue exceeded forecast for fiscal year-end to actual by 12.45%, with hot tax revenue exceeding its forecast by 15%. Expenditures were 89% compared to forecast in favor. And that's the sum of September.
Council, any questions for our Assistant Finance Director?
Seeing none? I would just like to make a comment on impact fees, because this was one month prior to the end of the fiscal year. We do have an inordinate amount of projects that have come on board. They are phasing in, for example, the Pearl River paid about $700,000 in water, in wastewater impact fees for only three foundations. So we're catching up, even as development slows just a tad in the concrete pores. For example, projects that we thought would phase six, six foundations at a time have cut back to three, but they're still projected at the same end date, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch?
I was just going to comment on that, too. The impact fees have been below, that's been our only red mark for a couple of years, and I can't wait to see the development catch up and help us pay for the impact fees for that. So fingers crossed, and I think we've done a good job to correct that and get our development caught up with the impact fees. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the report. Now we're going to see, we'll receive a presentation of our strategic budget planning calendar, and again, Ms. Allen?
Staff annually provide City Council with a calendar outlining the important dates of the upcoming fiscal year's budget and process. The calendar takes into consideration planning sessions, funding requests, and the laws that govern timing of specific activities as it pertains to approving the tax rate in the tax budget. The calendar that we present to you takes into account Texas tax code, Texas local government code, as well as the city charter as it pertains to the budget preparation. A lot goes into trying to prepare the city budget, and staff usually begins working on this process even within the first quarter of the new year. So as you see through this timeline, it's a very aggressive budget calendar.
Mayor, Council, I do want to draw your attention to the July 9th date. I know last year, we had discussion about community support, and there was discussion about moving that item up. Right now, it is a copyage from last year's calendar, but I am happy to take input to move that up. I know the council, I think the mayor, you said you were going to create a subcommittee or be part of a subcommittee, so we're happy to take a change in date to fit that in, to let the subcommittee do its work prior to bringing it into the budget process.
Yeah, I think that we need to look at our community support functions and make a determination if we want to put some of those into a regular funding cycle as opposed to the competition for the support services.
Yes.
So that we need to have that discussion. Thank you for that. Council, any questions or comments for Ms. Allen? Seeing none, we'll move to 6C. Receive the unaudited monthly financial report, the period ending October 31st, 2023.
Okay. With October, a lot of the revenue falls within the timing received. You're going to... I went too far. Sorry. I seem to be missing a page on my slide compared to the handout. My apologies. The slide that's missing on the presentation is the one that addresses revenue. All revenue for the funds are meeting expectation for October, with the exception of hot funds, but I want to assure you that that's strictly a timing. The Novembers that you will see next month will meet forecast for both October and November. The timing of revenue on that fund just hit differently. As well as for the Hunter's Crossing pit, that's a timing. They normally receive... I don't know what I just did to the presentation. I'm sorry. They normally receive the majority of their contributions during the tax time of December through February. For expenditures, all funds are running comparable to forecast and well under four expenditures. You will not see a lot of capital expenditures reported in the month of October and November for simple accounting purposes. We try to report those expenditures in the month and fiscal year that they occur, so you will see a lot of those reported in the September timeline, just for accounting purposes. Sales tax is running 11% higher than forecasted for October, as well as property tax running 33% higher. Property tax revenue is fairly low for October and November, with the majority of taxes, again, being reported through that December, February timeframe. General fund expenditures by department are running very comparable to forecast. There is one notable difference that you're used to seeing here, is development services normally would be reported on this page, but in the FY24 budget, they have been broken out in their own fund. out in their own fund, so we're going to have some more information from them a few pages down. Water revenue is running very close to forecast, as well as their expenditures. Right now, their expenditures are 88% compared to forecast, so that's nice for that fund. The electric fund revenue is 22% higher than forecast, as well as the hotel occupancy, which is 30% below forecast, again, that is a timing issue. Their expenditures are only 68% of their expected forecast. These are the new slides that you're seeing for development services, comparing their forecasts. They're running pretty close to forecast with 4% with their expenditures broken out by their department.
That's it?
That's it.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Allen? Just for clarity, we, the, all the charts and figures and spreadsheets are in the packet that was provided to us?
They are. It was just the revenue on the slide, but it is included in your handout.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
We will now move to item seven, citizen comments. We have several people have signed up. Madam City Secretary, do we have some additional ones that I'm not aware of?
No, Mayor.
We'll move right to them, and our first one to sign up under citizen comments, let me say that people who signed up for a specific agenda item, when we get to that agenda item, is when you're going to be given your time to speak. This is only for the generalized citizen comments, and our first one is Mr. Kirk Harrison. If you will approach, give us your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
My name is Kirk Harrison. I'm with Frontier Waste. I live in Bullverde, Texas. I just wanted to introduce myself. I understand there's a possibility you'll be going out for bid for your waste contract. We're very interested. We are a Texas company. We're located home office in Dallas. We're in Houston, and we run all the way down to Potteet, Texas. My area is San Antonio and Austin. I'm pretty familiar with Austin as when I worked with waste management, I ran the Austin unit, Waco, Harker Heights. 28 years in the trash business, and we have many people that have experienced very similar to mine. We feel real confident we can present to the city a very favorable RFP when it does come out, and I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that usually I show up about once a quarter when we do have a contract, just in case you have something on your mind and you want to explain it to me clearly. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Next, Elise Denuzzo. Tell me I got it right.
Real close. Real close. If you want to be authentic, Denuzzo.
I'll be authentic next time.
All right. All right, well, I'm Elise Denuzzo. I live at 313 Cedar Street here in Bastrop, Texas, and I want to talk to you guys about the rec center over on Water Street, just down the road here, and the need for childcare. So I dance in the Bali class that is at the rec center on Monday nights, 6:45, and Saturdays at 10:30 in the morning. So that's 6:45 PM on Mondays. And, yeah, that's important, I think. So on Saturday mornings, sometimes I bring my children with me, and they are, they're young, they're six years old and nine years old, and they don't go often with me because there isn't any childcare option, and they get bored easily, and it's just no fun for them, and therefore no fun for me. And so I don't usually go on Saturdays, and so, you know, I'm paying for a membership that I don't get to use fully. Second of all, I went last Saturday with my kids, and we invited two other moms who brought two of their young children with them, and unfortunately, we were told we had to leave. Some of the younger children, they couldn't just sit, you know, and sit still while everybody else was dancing. And so in the middle of class, we had to leave, and it was really, really disappointing, really disappointing to the other two moms who were super excited about trying out this class. This class isn't, it's not just a, you know, you know, fun little class at some small rec center. It's a really big deal. Obviously, there's a lot of us here, and we, you know, came up here, and, you know, that's not just a fraction of how many of us there are dancing. And, you know, moms need to dance, too. And moms need to exercise and be part of this joy that is the Bali X class. I'm super happy to be a part of it and be a part of it when I can. So that is what I have to say about the Bastrop Rec Center and the need for childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, as well as the public service announcement. It was pretty good.
Yes, yes.
Next scheduled to speak is Shirley Baugh.
My name is Shirley Baugh. I live at 185 Passler Shores Drive. I want to thank the Council for hearing me again. I was here two weeks ago, and I have to tell you, y'all scared me to death. I wanted to run out of the room.
You scared us.
Yeah, bet I did. Well, anyway, I'm here to state the obvious. You know, our Bastrop rec that Denise was talking about is we need more space, and we need it now, but we are excited about the plans for the future that y'all have for us. So on thinking about this, what if, rather than seeking a bigger space that might be harder to find, what if we add an additional space so we can serve everyone? Remember that, rather than less, how about more? So, you know, if we get another space, we could diversify. We could diversify our classes. We could actually have some beginners in one class, and it might be in a different space that we have the intermediate. What if we moved some of our bicycles over to one place, creating another space where when mothers come to dance, that we actually had a space that we could have childcare? So what about if we had just more programs, rather than less programs because we're all so cramped? What if we think about the programs we could have? Youth programs, again, with childcare, health and wellness, cooking classes, more balancing classes, we all need, we all need that, more social activities. So we keep, so with more social activities, which brings our community together, rather than just having a volleyball class, maybe we can actually go to bingo, you know. So, anyway, so in keeping with what we're thinking about here, if you, we know you have a new budget coming up, so it's almost like this is perfect timing for this, and we are excited and we are enthusiastic, because if we could have an additional space, rather than trying to find that bigger space, it might hold us for right now, and we could all come together with our families, just having so much more. So please remember, rather than less, how about more? Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Harrington.
Good evening.
Good evening. State your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
All righty. I see that. Ann Harrington, 110 Big Horn Pass in Hunter's Crossing. And my husband Bob and I moved here to Bastrop in 2007 when we retired out of Austin, on Main Street initially, and then when it was the Y, and then ultimately to Hunter's Crossing now. It's the rec center, but in any case, it's been a huge part of my life in all those years. Bob passed away, and it became even a bigger part of my life, because it's, it's a community, the rec center's a community unto itself. We are supportive of each other, we're there for each other. It's like the cheers where they kind of know, well, they might not remember your name because we're, a lot of us are old, but we, but we smile and we accept each other, and we're there for each other. So I want to emphasize in what Shirley said about, yeah, we need, obviously need more space, because we start, we've been in all sorts of locales, and y'all know that, I'm sure, the Kerr Community Center, the Lumber Yard across the street from the initial YMCA office. We even had that room behind the office and had 18 mats in that little bitty room for a class. Now we are entertaining 40, not entertaining exactly, but 40 people in some of our classes. They've had to restrict the number now to 32 to keep it safe, fire and safety-wise. So we obviously need space, and I'm really hoping with the budget that you all are bringing up soon, that we'll be at the top of that. We want to try to fast-track it if we can, or hope you all will. And then for now, the interim time, we do need more space. However, you know, what Shirley was talking about, however y'all are able to help us out, I'd appreciate it a lot. Let me see if I've, oh, and I personally take one to two classes every day of the week, so Monday through Friday, it's a huge part of my life. You know, when you're retired, and I've done the volunteering, and then the pandemic came along, and I decided I'm too old to do some of the stuff I was doing, so this is what's keeping me healthy and on my feet. So I just hope y'all will, will work with us on that. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And for your enthusiasm, too. Stacy Neef. State your name and address.
Hi.
You've got three minutes.
Stacy Neef. I live at 1253 State Highway 304. I am not a city resident, but I can guarantee you that my tax dollars go here because I spend my money here in town. And I want to thank you for providing a platform for myself and for my friends to speak to the Council in support of the city's recreation program in the facility. And this is going to sound a little bit like we cheated off of each other's papers, but anyway, your city recreation program has an active membership, and it's growing. As your chaplain stated, there's a lot of growth going on. And for those of you who have participated in a class or visited the center during class time, you know we have a nice little small gym in the back with free weights, and we have the machines, and we also have a 1,500-square-foot exercise floor for group classes. All members are appreciative of the space that we have. Your recreation program and building serves 579 members of all ages, gender, ethnic backgrounds, and physical abilities, including people recovering from strokes, cancer patients, people new to the community, friends who have recently lost a spouse or loved one. The rec provides an atmosphere of inclusiveness, love, friendship, and encouragement, acceptance, and camaraderie, and it's sort of like cheers, everybody knows your name, or they will soon. I'm going to run out of time. Your recreation program serves these 579 members with 29 regular weekly classes plus other specialty classes. And thanks to Bastrop's growing population in the month of January, the rec increased membership by about 30 new people. And while classes and schedules normally slow down in the fall before the holidays, the rec program gained participation. It's obvious that your friends, neighbors, and fellow citizens appreciate the programs offered. With growth comes challenge in every aspect of providing services to more and more people. The rec class participation is increasing, and as class sizes increase, sometimes it gets a little crowded. We must agree that this is a good problem to fix, as it proves you are serving the needs of the growing population. We all know there's a master plan. The master plan has a large emphasis addressing the needs of many outdoor parks, picnic, and recreation areas, and word on the street is in 2025, maybe we will have a rec center. That could be 12 to 24 months. But all of that being said, those of us who take advantage of these programs are grateful for the facility we have. We are asking if there is any way to provide a larger interim space so your city of Bastrop Recreation Program may continue to meet the needs of this growing population, and we are asking the Council to fast-track a multipurpose rec center building. Two years is a long time for a facility that is overdue, and as the city goes into budget, we are requesting that solid plans go into, be put into place in order to meet the needs of this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stay tuned. We appreciate y'all's comments. Next is Dax Haverlack. If you'll step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Dax Haverlack, 779 Peach Creek Road. I'm down in Rosanke, so we don't even have a rec center. We have a mud pit that folks wrestle in behind the Dollar Tree. But I'm not really here to talk about that, so I'm kind of the break between hopefully more rec center talks. Cheryl Lee, you may entertain my theatrics as I get a little mystery. But between the Council and the Attorney, there's about a six-year, I don't know, lingering issue that's been floating around on the Bastrop City's websites and across most of their platforms that might be opening up, some invalid contracts, some lack of contact. Effectively, Connie Schroder still has her signature and name on several government websites on Bastrop's website that need to be replaced with Lyle Nelson or a more agnostic Mayor of City Bastrop. This is primarily seen as of, well, last chamber session on the ninth was the six-year anniversary of Bastrop Special Permit that still has an old clerk's name, old Connie Schroder signature, and that form has been floating on the website from Bastrop for about six years. I know y'all have recently attempted to move to a special permits portal, but all of your same documentation for how to apply, how to do permits, still floats around on the city website. So last session, y'all talked about getting the inventory list for your real properties. I would also recommend trying to slide in or make the new agenda item of a inventory listing of your website to find all those old lingering documents that are still clogging in the systems, which will help streamline new application processes, new people's impressions of Bastrop County or Bastrop City's general bureaucratic process, because if I can still find old misdated information, lingering, just, it's a cluttered process overall. So, and that's just part of, part of the inventory. We've got a new year, new celebrations, and new paperwork. And I know y'all aren't going to be doing the IT work, that's all Colin's job, so he gets a fun new task. Oh, yeah. Oh, and 30 seconds left. I missed y'all's first meeting of the month, or this month, because I was down in Dallas for a home builders, Texas Home Builders Group. We got about 25% new homes will be coming to Texas in the next 18 months. That's a huge million or more, so I'm ready for Bastrop to be about 5,000 to 10,000 more homes in the next couple of months. Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you for your comments and suggestions. We appreciate it. All righty, Council, we will now move on to our consent agenda.
Mayor, if you would please call for anybody else who didn't sign up, I believe we have some folks.
Is there somebody else who wants to speak under general comments? Rather than the agenda item? State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Monica Carson, and I live at 108 Nichols Lane in Bastrop, Texas. On January 3rd, 2024, I brought it to the attention of the Mayor and City Manager, a Pride event was being held at the Bastrop Public Library on January 6th. This event was not on the calendar, but was on social media, and flyers were posted on the billboard at the library. The flyers had success, 101, and was listed as a life skills workshop. After bringing it to the attention of the community, many emails were written to the Mayor and City Manager. When I arrived at the Bastrop Public Library on January 6th, there was a Pride flag hanging in one of the library rooms being used. A few days after this, the event library updated their calendar for January 6th, and it now says, "Subject: Bastrop Pride, starts January 6th at 10:00 and ends at January 6th at 3:00." Description: Wellness and Life Planning. The public library is a place for adults and children to go and not be restricted. Example: With signs stating "Reserved for 13- to 17-year-olds in the teen room." Anyone should be able to go to any room in that library. Why is DEI under Principles and Objectives regarding the new policy coming up for 9B tonight? The library is for all already. Why do we have to add gender, identity, and sexual orientation? Under who will not be denied? Are people being denied when they go to the library? There should be no inappropriate books in the library or in the teen room. Under tonight, under exceptions and accommodations, the director and supervisor has the discretion to make exemptions. I would like to know who oversees their exceptions. Notification and Enforcement Process. Since under the teen room section, it states that users may enter the teen room to locate materials but cannot linger for an extended period of time, does this mean that anyone over seventeen who is in the teen room and an employee decides to, who is in the teen room and an employee decides someone is lingering too long, that they can call the police and have them removed? These are some of the books I found at the library in the teen room. Transmission: My Quest to Beared, B and Jazz, Animal Sexuality, ABCs of LGBT. I also have contacted our state rep, Stan Gerties, and then we also contacted state rep Jared Patterson, who's filed HB 900 regarding restricting explicit and adult-designated educational resources. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Before I move on, is there anybody else that wants to speak under citizen comments? We will now move on to Consent Agenda. Does anybody else at the dais want anything removed off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is anybody in the audience wish to have something removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you'll read the consent agenda, please.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, Consider Action to Approve City Council Minutes From the January 9th, 2024 Regular Meeting. Item 8B, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2024-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Calling For and Establishing the Procedures for a May 4th, 2024 General Election for Bastrop, Texas, and Providing for an Effective Date. Item 8C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2024-12 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving a Contract for Election Services Between the Elections Administrator of Bastrop County and the City of Bastrop for the May 4th, 2024 General Election for Bastrop, Texas, Attached as Exhibit A, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents and Providing an Effective Date. Item 8D, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2024-10 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop on City Staff's Recommendation Regarding the Bids Received for the Bastrop Power and Light Project Number 001 Regarding the 12.47 KV Overhead Electrical Distribution Line Improvements from the 2014 through 2019 System Study Projects, 5 and 11, Providing for a Repealing Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Counsel, City Secretary has laid out the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion, if you would, add the correction that we were given prior to, counsel, to your motion, if you would, please.
Motion to approve with the added correction.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Plunkett. Madam City Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We can now move on to items for individual consideration. The first up is 9A, Hold Public Hearing and Consider Action to Approve the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2024-01 of the Bastrop City, City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving the Zoning Concept Scheme from P4 Mix to PCS Civic Space for the area described as 1.08-plus-or-minus acres of land at a farm lot 67 east of Main Street, located northeast corner of State Highway 95 and Farm Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and move to include on the February 13, 2024 Regular Agenda for Second Reading. Mr. Cohen? I have, I have Ms. Higgins here, but.
Good afternoon. James Kai Development Services, representing this for Ms. Kennedy's, who's under the weather a little bit. As you stated, Mayor, we have the exhibit up here. This is property owned by the city. A lot of people knew it as the Blue House, which was recently demoed and cleaned. What we're requesting is to go to Civic Space from the designations of P4 and P5 for future expansion of the cemetery. If you can go to the next slide that shows the zoning. So the two lower lots are in the yellow. Where everything's in yellow is owned by the city. The two lots in question are the ones we're rezoning to Civic Space to match the rest of the existing Civic Space zoning. A public hearing was held at P&amp;Z back on 12/21, and they recommended approval of the zoning. I'm here to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Move to approve.
I need to have a public hearing first.
My apologies.
But I appreciate your enthusiasm, sir. So if we have no questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now I can take a motion.
Since I did it wrong, I thought maybe Cheryl wanted to do it. I moved to her first.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Plunkett, a second by Councilmember Lee. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to Item 9B, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2024-09 of City Council, Bastrop, Texas, Approving the City of Bastrop, Texas, Library User Responsibility and Conduct Policy, which is attached as Exhibit A, Providing for a Repealing Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Pearson?
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have provided you with a copy of the old policy, or the policy that's currently in use, which was approved by the council in 2015, and a copy of the proposed user responsibility and conduct policy that we would like to have approved this evening. In the old policy, there is a long list of disruptive behaviors that were defined as behaviors that interfere with normal operation of the library or another patron's ability to use and enjoy the library. There was a short list of patron requirements when they used the library, and a large section concerning responsibilities of parents, guardians, and caregivers, excuse me. With the new policy, we have stated expectations in a format of smaller bulleted sections, which makes it easier to read. Where possible, we have used positive phrasing and inclusive language. We have revised the responsibilities of parents, guardians, and caregivers to include vulnerable individuals and address unattended children in the library. We've added a section concerning animals in the library. We've added a notification and enforcement section. We made an effort to provide a set of standards for conduct in the library that ensures everyone experiences a safe environment. I would like to add that this policy has also been reviewed by our city attorney and has been approved by our library board. Are there questions?
Any questions for Ms. Pearson? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor, I apologize, who made the motion?
Councilmember Meyer.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, counsel. We will move on to Item 9C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2024-13 of the City Council, City of Bastrop, Texas, Confirming the Appointment by the Mayor of Gary Moss to the Historic Landmark Commission Place 5 as the Representative of the Planning and Zoning Commission as required in Section 3.08 of the City's Charter and Establishing an Effective Date. Motion to approve? I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. No further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. I'm going to change up the agenda a little bit and move to Item 9G, Consider an Act to Accept a $1,200 Donation to St. David's Hospital, the City of Bastrop, for the creation of a mural in Delgado Park honoring Minerva Delgado. We have several people that wish to speak on this, and they will do so after the presentation. By our city manager.
Mayor, you probably want to come down from the dais to accept a check, as well as Councilmember Lee, since she was the original person who received the donation. So this item is to accept $1,200 from St. David's Hospital for the City of Bastrop for a mural at Delgado Park. And so a little bit about the history of this item. Councilmember Lee was actually selected. She approached St. David's Foundation about the need for honoring history both at Kerr and at Delgado. Delgado has moved a little bit faster, and she's, she's smiling. She's worked with the Parks and Rec and the Cultural Arts Commission to develop a, an archetype. They put out a call for artists. They've received some and some preliminary designs. We have some heavy-hitting support from both the family of Minerva Delgado, St. David's Foundation, as well as Senator Barrientos, who is in the audience, sitting quietly against the wall over there, who I'm sure will want to say a few words. Councilmember Lee has put together a presentation that is up on the screen, so Councilmember Lee, take it away.
I thought we discussed you doing the presentation.
I, I.
Thank you, city manager. So just a brief, and we're probably just going to run through these slides. Can't see, so I have to turn this. So one of the initiatives that I had before I even got on city council, my, my house literally sits in front of Delgado Park, so I'm like the keeper of Delgado Park I became. And, but then going into city council, one of the things that I, even before going into city council, was making sure we didn't just put a playscape out there and call it a park. I want to see the original vision of Delgado Park come to fruition. So this was one of the initiatives that I, I came into city council with. So I was part of a program with St. David's called the Network Weaver Program. And we, that was actually during COVID, 2020. We did it online, and it's basically getting a group of leaders in the community together and figuring out how we can help one another in our respective cities come together to come, to bring projects to fruition. So out of that, I presented an idea of, of creating a community project to break down silos, because in a lot of, a lot of times in cities, you have your different groups and organizations. You only work within your groups and organizations, and you can get so much more done if all of those groups and organizations are working together. So I came up with an idea of creating a project in the community that every group, every organization, board, commission might want to engage in. That evolved multiple times. This project changed multiple times since 2020 to where we are now with the mural project at Minerva Delgado, as well as establishing some art structures in Kerr Community Park. As the city manager stated, this one was an easier task, and we were able to secure $1,200 in funding for my idea from St. David's. Initially, actually, it was 600, and then when I presented them with the mural, they upped it another $600, so we were able to get $1,200 to go toward this project, which has a total cost of $2,500. So basically, the history of Minerva is a historical case, and I'm going to let the senator come up and go more into detail about it, but it's an historical case of these, of ending segregation for Mexican-American students who were not allowed to go to public schools, white schools. So there was an historic case of Delgado, or Minerva Delgado, or Delgado versus the ISD, which actually ended segregation to allow Mexican Hispanic children to go to a public school and integrate. So there are a lot of key players in that. She herself, I've had many conversations with her. She says that she often becomes the focal point of that case when really it was, she was a child. It was her family, and all of those involved, like Senator Barrientos, that helped push that through in those days. And so we wanted to find a way in that park to honor her outside of just putting her name on the park, but with a mural. The artist is in the audience, and I'd like for him to come up and talk a little bit about it. The structure that you see on the screen is the bathroom. So that's the only structure that's out there outside of the playscape. So we didn't, we, we wanted to make sure the mural was placed on something that would be there, not something that would transport or train, change out. We wanted a structure that would be there and be stable, and that restroom is there. If we could go to the, there's the image. So that's the concept image. That has changed quite a bit. Initially, it was a different image. We sent it to Minerva and for her family to take a look at it, make some changes, whatever changes were necessary. We gave that feedback back to the artist. He came back with this. She loves it. We sent him two photos, one of her is a little girl, and then one is she was a little older girl with longer hair. And she says that the artist was able to capture both of those photos somehow in this photo, although she says she would like her lips a little thinner and her skin a little lighter. Other than that, she thinks it's the perfect display to honor her. We are going to ensure that the, the materials used are anti-graffiting coating. That was another concern of hers. She did not want it to be, to go through all the effort of putting it up there for someone to just, you know, deface it. So we assured her that we're working towards making sure that the paint will be anti-resistant. So if you go back, think a couple of slides backwards. I just wanted to talk about one, I'll go back forward to the criteria, how we selected the artist. We did do an artist call in partnership with the Cultural Arts Commission. We have a representative here tonight from that group, as well as the Parks Board. So again, trying to create a project where we all can work together across boards and commissions to get this done. We put out an artist call in 2023. The deadline for that was the 30th. We received two to three submissions, and the artist that was selected by the Cultural Arts Commission was Curtis Griffin, a local artist here in Bastrop. If you can move forward for me. So stop there for me. And so here is a breakdown of the budget and materials for the project. Itemized breakdown, materials total 625, labor total 1875, to total the, total, make the total cost of the project $2,500. Fast forward one more for me. Do I have anything else? I think the rest is just a palette. So thank you for the slides. So from this point, what I'd like to do, if I may, is bring up Senator Barrientos, who came all the way down, braved the rain from Austin. He and I have been in contact multiple times regarding the project, and I'd like for him to just come up and give a little bit of the history and also relay his support. I also have support letter, a support letter from Minerva Delgado, as well as former mayor Ken Kestelis, who was on the dais at the time that the park was approved. And I've also reached out to Kay McAnally, and I wasn't able to get in contact with her, but through a resident, she did give a support, her support for the mural as well. Senator Barrientos?
May it please the council. My name is Gonzalo Barrientos, and I am a Bastropian living in Austin, but I still pay taxes here. In keeping with those beautiful words that you have above you, "Preservation of the past, progress for the future." Let me talk very briefly. I shall not filibuster. My background, I think, why I'm here. briefly. I shall not filibuster. My background, I think, why I am here. Before I was born, in the late 30s, four miles north of Bastrop, there were coal mines. My grandfather was a coal miner there. My dad, too, for a few years, was a coal miner also. They closed those coal mines. They wanted anthracite from the east coast, hotter burning coal. And so, the people had to leave there and find jobs. There was a little village out there, Fielan, Calveen, or Calvin, as they called it, and several other, about four coal mines. And when they closed them down, the people had to leave. My grandfather stayed on the farm, which now, over 100 years, we still owned, small farm. Mom and dad went to Galveston. I was born in Galveston. I am B O I. But, my dad was hurt on the ships, came back to Bastrop, and he was picking cotton all the years until I was a junior in high school. And those times of going to West Texas, to Littlefield, to Lubbock, Paducah, was a story in itself, and there are books going to be written about that. But, when I was six years old, my mother said, "Do you want to go to school? Do you want to pick cotton?" "I'm going to school, baby." And so, I went to this school. It was the school that is on North Main, where I had the honor of getting a historical marker from our state of Texas. The fact that I used to be on the Finance Committee didn't have too much to do with that. What led to that situation? To the Mexican school, by the way, there are about two or three schoolrooms in that building, not just one. I was there. There was an effort, because you see, most Mexican-Americans in Texas, aside from the valley, were segregated, or they didn't have a school. Lulak can tell you a little bit of history on that. So, there was a gentleman named Gustavo Garcia, civil rights attorney from San Antonio, Dr. George I. Sanchez, professor at the University of Texas, and Dr. Hector P. Garcia, World War II physician, looking for the right place to file a lawsuit. And Minerva is a beautiful lady. She was one grade ahead of me in the Mexican school. But, it's those three individuals that one should never forget that got it accomplished, done. The lawsuit was won. The next year, I'm going to school at the white school, that they call it then. Now, that begins a new chapter in life for a lot of people, because it affected not only the Bastrop, but the whole state of Texas, and especially for me. You see, because we were segregated, I learned to speak English a lot, because my grandpa wanted to speak Spanish at home. I learned to speak English from the black children out there four miles north of Bastrop. They had a one-room schoolhouse over there next to our little farm. So, when we were integrated, it was very easy to me, for me to make friends with some of the white kids, which was great. That is another story, that when I got back into the second, third, fourth grade, some of the Mexican-American children said, "You're hanging around with the white kids. You're a sellout." "Oh, really?" So, sometimes you get it from two sides. Some of you, being in politics, know what that means. You can't please all of the people all of the time. But, got through that, and that started a new world. There's so much more, but I could tell you. That led to University of Texas for me, working, and I'll never forget, playing for Lyndon Johnson, right up there on the hill, when I was in the band, Bastrop Band. And also, by the way, if you see my maroon I'm wearing today, Bastrop Bear, 130-pound linebacker, 1960. Check it out. So, what happens now? I decided that I would take the course that John Kennedy told us. Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. So, after the University of Texas attendance, I worked training Vista Peace Corps volunteers, setting up those projects all over Texas to help the people stand on their feet all rights. I worked in Washington, DC, came back, and served in the Texas House 10 years, in the Texas Senate 20 years. I am to be, I am a proud Bastropian, but you remember certain things in life, pain. Oh, yes, you can cut your hand, you can break your arm. That's one kind of pain. But, pain to a child, things that I saw, Mexican, go back to Mexico. Wetback, do this, do that. But, what was done, in the words of preservation of the past, we must not forget, because we are a team, we Americans. If you're a woman or a man, if you're that color, if you're this color, or whatever color, we are a team. That's why I'm here today, just to try to add a little bit to Councilmember Lee and what her efforts have done. And so many other Bastropians, by the way, of all colors. We are Bastrop. We are proud, and please proceed with the progress that we have made in 75, 100 years in Texas. God bless you for serving, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service, your long service, also for your passion and for your love of Bastrop. We appreciate it, Senator.
Go Bears!
Thank you.
There you are. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, I'd like the artist to come up, just to talk a little bit about the vision, and again reassure the community of what type of materials will be used to paint the structure, as well as kind of a timeframe in terms of best climate to do this, so that we can get an idea of when's the best time to start the actual project if approved at council tonight.
Hello, Council. I'm Curtis Griffin, a little bit 502 Magnolia Street, just a few blocks from the Delgado Park. Just honored to be kind of selected for the project. I bike a lot around town. I would ride by the Ameen Award School often and see the historical designation, and just kind of going through the progression of history of learning the area. As I, you know, I wanted to integrate myself into Bastrop and the artist community. So, got some prints and art available on Apple Chapel Main Street. I joined the Lost Pines Arts Center, and just really kind of dug in and tried to get involved in the arts community here, and happy to be selected for this project. A little bit of inspiration that went into it was the research that I did on Delgado Lopez, and it was just so wonderful to see, also her letter of support for the project was awesome. For this particular project, because of the building materials, it's quite coarse. It is stone, so it, to me, means it's exorbitant. I wanted to approach it with only aerosol. I don't think a brush could probably handle the paint application. So, there's special considerations. I just go into the painting application for the building itself, and then the family itself had asked for the extra graffiti protection, which is additional stuff, the material there at the end of it. So, proposed, we're just looking at a base coat. We're painting two sides, the two sides that would be facing your entry as you come into the park, leaving two sides unfinished, the sides where the actual bathroom doors are. And I'm presenting an anamorphic perspective of the image, where if you're standing in the correct spot in the park, you should see the full, instead of seeing just one part of the building, when you stand at the entrance of the park, you should see the full scope of the thing. For the aerosol and the projects, I leaned out the budget and everything. Anything else you'd like to add?
Your estimate on best time to start a project like this?
Just from painting murals for many, many years, spray paint doesn't work well under 60 degrees. So, I would definitely say warmer than 60 and dry. And it's really going to be kind of a, you know, pick a good, dry week and get in there and just kind of get started with it.
This week is not it?
This is not the week. I would say at least until April or May, until, because, you know, again, the building being stone, we want it to have proper drying time before it starts applying any type of paint, or I just want, I don't have to come back and touch it back up. I want to do it right the first time and make sure everything's on the level.
Thank you, sir. Any more?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions.
I have, we'll hit questions. I have one more person sign up to speak. I have Carrie Fossler.
We still have the check presentation, Mayor.
I'm trying to get through the presentations and the questions. Thank you so much, City Manager. State your name and address, please.
I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street, and the Ameen Award Historical Marker is also in our side yard, so I feel in a special, strong connection to this whole proposal this evening. And I'm here from the Parks Board, and we reviewed the conceptual mural on December 7, and I know there's been some recent modifications that she's very pleased with. And we just, I just wanted to give thumbs up from the Parks Board. We're super happy about this. We're delighted, and I want to say, Parks Board gives its thumbs ups. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Council, any questions for any of our presenters this evening? If not, I will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I just wanted to check with the city manager. We're okay with the funding on this? We've got, I know it's not a lot of money, but just want to make sure we're okay with budget-wise.
Yes, sir. Actually, I believe you have a council member who wants to make the donation themselves, but I will let that person speak if they so choose.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes. So, Councilperson Lee, I wanted to say, offer a profuse thank you for the vision, the idea, and the execution that's gotten us to this point. I attended the anniversary event for the Supreme Court case that we're talking about here, and I met a gentleman there named Mr. Warhado, and he spoke of attending a Mexican school in the US down in the Rio Grande Valley. I talked to him during intermission, and we realized we went to the same high school together in Brownsville, Texas. And so, I have a heart for the Mexican-American community and many lifelong friends that, you know, I started grade school with, that this whole thing is really meaningful to me as well. And so, on behalf of myself, my wife, my children, the Kirkland family, I'm donating $1,300 to the city to pay for the balance of the mural.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Thank you.
That puts a big smile on my face.
Any other questions, comments for any of the presenters? If not, I will entertain a motion to act to accept.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes. Councilmember Lee, if you will join me down at the podium, we will accept this check.
We have a rep from St. David's who has a few words to say, as you guys come down.
Do I speak, or do you guys?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. All right. So, thank you, Councilwoman Lee. We are pleased to be here tonight. The Central Texas Health and Wellbeing Network, which is funded through St. David's Foundation, is thrilled to provide this gift to the City of Bastrop to support funding for the mural at Minerva Delgado Park. On behalf of 1,300 members of the Central Texas Health and Wellbeing Network, which I am the network coordinator for, we are pleased to provide a check in the amount of $1,200 to the City of Bastrop. These dollars were made possible in the support of our network and our shared goal to engage and empower residents in Central Texas to improve the quality of life, health, and well-being of our communities. This opportunity would not have been possible without the leadership of Councilmember Cheryl Lee, a network weaver and participant in our networks, sorry, yes, participatory grant-making process. Speaking for our network members, we are excited to contribute to this important and necessary project, and to see Ms. Lee's vision become a beacon of hope and empowerment for residents of our city.
Yes, I'll take a picture. Let's. Who they made out to? Darn. And in case Councilmember Kirkland's check bounces, we can cover it.
Legal team investigates, having the finance right at all.
I do want to thank City Manager Correa. I've been probably in your ear for the good portion of a year, been emailed. I'm an email and text kind of girl, so I get to a point where I'd be like, "Okay, I need an update."
No, ma'am. You need to tell them that our updates happen at about 6:00 in the morning.
Yeah, this is true.
That's when you need to tell them. That is when we are having conversation and text.
Many conferences on my drive into Austin. But, thank you so much for helping me. I didn't know how this whole process was. She sent me where I needed to go. I want to thank Chloe again, who's in the audience from the Cultural Arts Commission, and for all of their hard work. And again, Mayor Protem Kirkland, thank you for your contribution. This makes me happy.
Funny story, when my phone is buzzing at 6:02, Cheryl's on her way to work, and she wants to talk. And Cynthia's here by 6:45, and John's here by 7:59, and Kevin's here by 8:59, and Jimmy's here by 2:59, and the mayor's here by 2:59, every single week, y'all. So, that's why I'm aging in dog ears.
Maybe that's why I'm missing the meetings. I get here at 9:00.
Oh, yes. You're due at 8:59.
Yes. I appreciate the collaboration. I appreciate the donation. I appreciate the efforts that everybody's put forward to move this great project along. Senator, again, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, under City Manager's report, Kathy Danielson is uber-excited and wants me to mention that the senior centers normally, the senior dance normally has 40 to 50 people. There are 225 people next door.
Incredible.
And Sumai is here to talk for the seniors, so she's missing the dance. We've kept her here longer than we need to, so if you would please allow her...
I had no idea. Yes, please.
225 people.
Please, Sumai. I said we was going to be moving the agenda around a lot, so...
Well, good evening. If y'all not aware of it right now, this senior center is having their first marihuana party right across the street. It started at 5:30, and when I just, I've been back and forth, so they're on the dance floor now, cutting it up. We crowned our queen and queen for 2024. It was absolutely beautiful. So, they wanted to let the city council know that they are doing wonderful things at the senior center. It's growing by leaps and bounds. When I first started volunteering over here, they had 98 members. Now, we're over 300, and it's growing every day. That was the last count I had, so I'm quite sure it's more than that. And we had people signing up over there tonight as well. So, we're going to be knocking on your doors, because we're going to need a bigger space. But, it's beautiful. So, we're in partnership with the city rec, Terry Moore, doing beautiful programs at the center as well. And we just encourage people, if you know seniors in the community, tell them, "Sign up." It's $25 a year, and they do a lot of fun activities. And thank you.
Thank you.
Sumai, I'm just going to tell you, Councilmember Plunkett's wife is very jealous she was not able to compete, and so she may, somebody may find their crown stolen.
Counsel, this dance was held tonight because the ice that we had last week caused them to postpone it until this week. So, it's your commitment to the benefit of the City of Bastrop that you are missing that dance right now. But, thank you for the report, Ms. Lucumbi. We appreciate it. Now, we're going to move back into our regular agenda. Say again? I have no idea.
It may not be over at 9:00 with 225 people. Kathy has assured me she's not kicking anybody out.
Let's get through our agenda before we get talking about dancing. Item 9D, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2024-14. The City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, appointed Lael Nelson and Crystal Grimes to the city's liaison to newly create a Bastrop County Public Health Department Task Force, as authorized by Section 3.01 of the city's charter and establish an effective date. Counsel, this is, we have some representatives from the Bastrop County Public Health Department. They have asked us to join the task force with both an elected official, as well as a community leader... a community leader to establish a county-wide health district. Dr. Wilson, Ms. Nichols, do y'all, is there anything y'all want to say, or do y'all want us to go ahead and take action and get moving on this?
We're just going to.
No, if you're going to say, you got to come up to the, I'm not, you're not getting off that easy. If you want to say something, you got to walk up.
Mayor, they want to do the dance.
I know, I know. It's going to make her talk faster.
Yeah, no, just wanted to say we're thrilled at, hopefully, the action that you're going to be taking. I can't think of any more enthusiastic people, and what an honor to have y'all participating in this effort. It's going to be awesome.
We appreciate your efforts very much, very much. Okay, counsel, any questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I do have one quick comment. I just wanted to, if approved tonight, which I'm sure will congratulate Crystal. Crystal has been up and coming in the Bastrop community for, God, five years that I've known you at least, and I'm so happy that you have an opportunity. Every time you can go to the next level, I'm with you, girl. More power, women power. I love it. I know you're going to do well in this role, and I'm just really thankful for everything that you do for Bastrop.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Now we'll move to the motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to 9E. Consider an act to amend the hotel occupancy tax fund budget by increasing it by an amount not to exceed $225,000 to cover emergency repair expenses to the visitor's center and museum located at 904 Main in Bastrop, Texas. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, mayor. The, I'm not sure how many of the council or the public are aware that the building that the museum actually sits in is a city-owned building that is leased to the museum. The lease is a triple-net lease, which requires the museum to pay repairs, taxes, and rent. The rent is nominal. There are no taxes because it is a city building. However, the repairs, it was an aging building to begin with, and the age has continued, obviously, throughout. The museum approached me a few months ago about some necessary repairs that were causing some concern and some possible damage to not only the collection, but some health and safety issues just in general to the visitor's center, namely fire suppression, namely some leaks that had occurred in the building that have mold and just not good things happening in the building. I know that font is very difficult to read. The, the total estimated expenses that the museum staff have given us exceed $500,000. The itemized expenses without the project management and without the contingency total about $279,000. We had an amount of $225,000 because when we began to have this conversation, that's what they believe the estimate was. City staff was to go over and complete their portion of the assessment, but, you know, we had a little thing called freeze and weather. And so we've also just created a fleet and facilities department. So these are bids that the museum staff has received. There may be opportunities for economies of scale with city bids. There may be opportunities where city staff may be able to do some of the work because it is a city facility. So I think the initial amount of not to exceed $225,000 is sufficient. However, I cannot tell you exactly which line item is going to be which. Right now, the biggest line item is a fire suppression system. Obviously, the museum can't just be watered down in terms of a fire. There are special foams and chemicals that need to be sprayed to protect the collection. So with that, I will answer any question. The hot fund, which is where these repairs would come from for visitor and museum center, is a healthy fund. It has 1.9 million in unrestricted reserve.
Counsel, any questions for our city manager on this item? Councilmember Crouch.
I, and city manager, you already answered a couple of them, kind of. So I was just curious, when I looked at the cost of, of those things, if they did get bids, so they did get bids for all those items, because some of them seem kind of high. So this, we're just establishing a budget for it, right? And then they'll be able to maybe whittle down some of the cost?
Correct. And the city would end up handling the procurement, et cetera. This is not just a check that's handed over. It is our facility. We have some legal obligations on how the repairs are made and how safe it is for the public.
And then, any reason why the fire truck is so much to relocate other than the fact that it's in a basement?
Museum staff is here. They are welcome to answer that question if you, if you would like.
No. I mean, I just was, I'm just curious more than anything, how you get the.
Nicole.
Aren't you glad you showed up?
This is what I'm here for.
Yes, ma'am.
Nicole Guzman, Director of the Visitor Center and Museum. The fire truck in particular is to relocate it outside and then to enclose it and give it some lighting at night. So because it is an artifact, it needs to be protected outside.
Okay. We were just curious, because that was one of the biggest items, other than the fire, fire protection on there. And then the mini splits in the bathroom. So there's no heating or cooling in the bathroom separately now? Is that why you have to do that?
There is not, and we have ongoing humidity issues.
Okay.
So it was recommended that we get a split unit for the restrooms in the visitor's center.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, my question's probably for the city attorney. I mean, doing this, is that, is it going to cause any issue with the lease being that it's a triple-net lease and we're going to be providing some of the maintenance that, you know, they are technically responsible for under the lease?
Sure, ma'am, counsel. I don't think the award of this funding for that is going to interfere with their ongoing obligations under that triple-net lease.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We will move to item 9F. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2024-15. The city council, city of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing execution of a master agreement between Aqua Water Supply Corporation and the city of Bastrop regarding consent to transfer portions of its certificated retail water service area to the city, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing an effective date. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, mayor. Most folks in the audience aren't aware that Bastrop isn't quite all served by water. Aqua Water was created in 1969 as a rural service provider. Water is the new gold, right? Very limited supply, very limited resource. A city's certificate of convenience and necessity. It used to be that those were very, very lucrative, and you didn't give up those areas because it was a potential revenue source. With new legislation that has entered, that is not necessarily the case. We may want to give up some things because we just don't have the potential to serve, or the burden for the taxpayers may be too great. In the case of Aqua, they are struggling not just with a supply. They did receive some permits recently, but they're going back to their roots that Aqua is a rural water provider. And so the densities that are being allowed, not just in the B3, but in development in general, so that development has an ROI that creates, keeps prices low, means more units per acre. The county continues to struggle because it's a, it's a push and pull. The county's drainage is bar ditches, which means large lots, which means less units per acre. So the city is caught in the middle. We have an ability to serve. We have a 1445 agreement with the county, and the particular development in this area is Ironwood, which is at 304, and it is south of 71. It is approximately 1,100 units that would be served. Aqua cannot provide service. The developer is creating a mud to complete the complexity. The city gave authorization for the mud to proceed because that's how the development would raise dollars. The development is ready, willing, and able to extend the line to receive water and sewer services from the city. The complicated portion is this is in the Aqua CCN. Aqua has said, we don't have the ability to serve, and as a result, we are willing to allow the city to serve in our CCN for a cost of $8,200 an acre. What you're seeing on the screen in blue is the entire Aqua CCN that surrounds the city of Bastrop. The area in question, I'm sorry, this isn't as transparent as I thought. The area in question is, is south of our wastewater treatment plant. This would be a pass-through cost. The developer would pay $8,200 per acre included in their tap fees. So if their tap fees equal $10,000, it's one acre, there would be an additional $8,200 added. There is no additional cost to the city. It is a pass-through in order to be in somebody else's territory. I am happy to, sorry, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have a couple of questions. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Can you go back to the map and kind of be more explicit about the region you're, we're talking about here?
So the area that wants to develop is in this area south. Our CCN boundary is to the north of that region. It's sort of right smack dab where it says Aqua wastewater. It's a development called Ironwood. You saw an Ironwood mud, I don't know, maybe two months ago.
And so we've got this city of Bastrop water CCN with a blue boundary around it, and then we have this section with streets in it up in the kind of top left-hand corner in a big, you know, L shape.
Tahitian.
Up further to the left, left top, top-left corner. Yeah, that. What, what is that black area?
So some of that is our wastewater CCN. The agreement with Aqua is anywhere that Aqua has water CCN, but we have wastewater CCN, there would be an ability to transfer rights of service.
Oh, so we're talking about that area as well?
No, I'm just outlining the boundaries. Right now, it is per development. As development comes, if they're in the Aqua CCN, there's an ability for us to share, to be in a collaborative partnership.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing that is good about this is we're both seeking alternate water sources. Everybody's hungry for water. And when there are multiple permits out, it increases the demand and the less likelihood that one of us is going to get a permit. The, the Water Conservation District is looking at all the permits, as they should, stringently. So if we have an ability to collaborate, we have an ability to share, we have a secured water supply. It just means one less permit that is out there requesting to drain, you know, any available water supplies. You're going to see an agreement in the next, at the next council meeting that talks about our effluent sale to Aqua. Because water is the new gold, and it is scarce and scarce, it used to be that effluent was not as reused for potable water as the technology now allows. So we would be one of the first cities in the state to begin to create a closed system where we are utilizing every available drop of water.
Do we have any other questions for our city manager? Councilmember Crouch.
Would this push our boundary out? I mean, obviously, it's going to push it out, but the connecting piece, because it's pretty far out.
No, sir. No, sir, it does not. Our development agreement calls for annexation at a point in time. As you know, I can't force folks to annex. My hammer used to be, if you want water from me, you got to annex, and you got to figure out how you get to me. That's not the rule in place anymore. Thank you, Texas Austin legislators. However, we have worked on strategic partnerships, partnership agreements that's, it's tied up with the county right now, but we'll talk about that later, that would allow us to capture sales tax in these areas. The idea being prior development agreements only talked about water and wastewater. Well, there's other things that are important. Parks, police, fire, everybody who shows up during events. So the strategic partnership agreements and future annexation agreements are important.
So if it's, if it's just a pass-through cost, and there's really no incentive, all's, all's we're doing is just allowing these people to get water then, right? Because if it's a pass-through cost, there's no incentive for the city to do that other than just provide the water?
Correct. They are what, the incentive for the city is actually they are installing the infrastructure as part of the mud. And so the infrastructure is then dedicated to the city. So it may be an Aqua CCN territory, but it is infrastructure that belongs to the city that allows us to further expand growth areas that may end up getting us to that thousand foot so that we can begin to piggyback, or annexations become easier.
And then Ironwood has a development agreement to put their infrastructure in per city standards, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right. Thank you. Good question. Seeing no other comment, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? None indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We will move to item 9H. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2024-16. Of the city council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Hurst for the purchase of various goods and services, authorizing negotiation and execution of all necessary documents, providing for repeal, and providing for an effective date. Chief Rosales.
How are you, sir? Mayor, counsel? We are bringing a ILA or an interlocal agreement before you that is from the city of Hurst. City of Hurst has done some contract bidding. They went out and did some bids for some road repairs materials. We're looking to piggyback off of their ILA that they, or actually, we're looking to piggyback off of the bids they've already contributed, they've already done. So this will prevent us from having to do it. We just partner with them on their, what they've already accomplished, and then we're going to receive the same cost that they received. The city of Kyle, city of Buta, and there's several other cities that have done the same thing, just reaping the rewards for what the city of Hurst has already done. And so you'll see, this is us making the resolution for the actual interlocal agreement, and then I've got the next item after this is, is the contract to negotiate and go forth. Are there any questions?
We do have a couple of questions. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
So we have the obvious 9I that comes next, that directly refers back to this interlocal agreement.
Yes.
What else do they have that we could buy that's cool?
So we'll have to get with, yeah, we'll get with finance and see what other contracts they have open that we can go. We, we just have to execute this first, and then we can go back and look at other services. But this will cover all services and goods that they've already bid out, and we just reference those later, kind of like we do with other cooperatives like DIR, all those other ones, same thing.
Okay, thank you.
This is a new, this is a new thing for us, not having to reinvent a wheel that another city's already done.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of cities in political supervision go into cooperative purchases because it shortens the procurement time, it's a cost benefit that comes along with it, and it certainly speeds up the process.
Speeds up the process, yeah, because we can get this done tomorrow, get the contract started, and go forth.
Yeah, and this is not.
Without having to do bids and seal bids and wait and wait.
This is not the only co-op out there.
Nope.
Several council of governments have them also.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Lee.
I think my question might be for an I. You only wait for I? I mean, it's all, they're both the same.
Sure. I like it. I like it. Since we're going to wait for that, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Now we'll move to item 9I. Consider action to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Holbrook Asphalt Company in an amount not to exceed $1,003,300 for the purchase of high-density mineral bond seal HA5, treatment for asphalt pavement, and traffic control through use of the city of Hurst interlocal purchasing agreement. Chief Rosales?
Mayor, counsel, so now that you've approved 9H, we can move to 9I. So that's gonna be, we're looking to expand our pavement management program to help improve the life cycle. And any of the street questions, I'm gonna refer to our new...
He's looking quite surprised that I'm asking him to come up to the podium.
But he was, he was on his feet.
He kept saying, "Me? Me? Me? You sure? Me?"
I'll introduce our new streets and drainage director. This is John Edleton.
Go ahead, sir. Nice to be here tonight. Thank you for all you do for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
So John is very soft-spoken. John comes to us from Techstat and the city of Lockhart and has experience using this material, which has a longer lifespan than our normal. I don't know, I call it a slurry seal. I know y'all have a better name for it, but...
A lot of the roads back in 2019 and '22, they were seal-coated. Seal coat's a good tool, but it's not really a good funnel riding surface. You can see sometimes on the cul-de-sacs where the rock is getting pulled up because the turning and twisting of vehicles, especially the trash trucks. This product will seal it down and hold it in place. And all the stuff that you see and read about it, it's got a lot of good, long lifetime.
And because of some of the recent actions that we as council taken, we're fixing to get good use of your expertise. So hang on. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I do.
Councilmember Lee?
Can I go first? John, I was expecting you to be like, "Hi, my name is John." Nice to meet you. I just had a couple of questions on how the selection of the streets that were chosen. My initial question was gonna be, how many streets fill in that two-to-eight-year range? But then, then I kept reading and I saw that there was already a list of streets selected here. So was that based on that pavement index? And, because some of the streets that are horrible, like Mesquite, I think it is, and Water are not on this. So are they too damaged to be able to use this material? That's what I kind of thought.
Yes, so, sorry.
I was gonna say, those are gonna be complete rebuilds at a later date. And we will bring those back to you at a later time after they've had time to go through and do some, y'all gotta do samples and some other stuff.
Yes.
Core samples and verify the streets and what's underneath there before they go out. Plus utilities that we won't, only want to dig it up one time. So we're gonna vet all that information and then bring it back to you. So these are just taking care of the streets that have been identified. And we've got this map. This is the overall map that's being shown now. And so each of the streets that are shown on there are the ones that are gonna be done with specifically this material. And then we will come back at a later time to utilize the, the additional funding from the street tax from EDC that got moved. We will come back and identify that and put that up for you guys to, to see and what streets are gonna be rebuilt, like Water Street, I think Mesquite, and there's some other ones in there.
Councilmember Crouch, your light was on earlier. Do you still have a question?
No, I found my, answer my question in the, in the packet.
Outstanding. Any further questions for staff?
So, Mayor, I did want to raise, I did want to raise an issue that goes directly to Councilmember Lee's question. This is sort of step one. This is, these are the streets that are already due. We did crack sealing and we did this seal coat, but it doesn't have the longevity. And I hate to say, we spent good money after bad, but we spent good money after bad because that's what we are accustomed to doing, trying to stretch the budget. If you do just a little bit more and you can trim the corners by like partnering with Hurst and doing an economy of scale, you get the same result, but you get a better product over the long term. The second phase is those things, I heard y'all, when the street money passed, I heard y'all, you said, "I want to see street construction happening everywhere." We know that in this first year, we're not gonna be able to do it alone. So at the next council meeting, you will see an interlocal agreement with the county at Precinct 1, and you'll see an interlocal agreement with the county at Precinct 2. Precinct 1, Commissioner Hamner and the Water Control District have already met with John and myself and staff on doing the streets in Tahitian that belong to the city that look like the lunar eclipse of Mars, that they've committed to help us do. Commissioner Beckett, we are meeting with her tomorrow. She will help us do the streets at Piney, in Piney Hoffman Lower Lane, those things that are in her precinct. So you'll start to see us gather some traction. But again, it's not spending an extra dollar. It's just being collaborative with folks who, who do this. The county builds streets and can prep quickly. I mean, John himself can get on a piece of equipment. Even my Robert on Fridays will be running a maintainer, if you can believe that, just because we're getting all hands on deck, because y'all told me to get busy. So I'm trying to get busy.
And they have the equipment for us to get busy.
The county does, yes.
And the crew. Oh.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're gonna come back with this specific deal with a timeline that shows you exactly which neighborhoods and streets are going at what time. We're working through that timeline out, right now with the contractor. So as soon as that's firmed up and we actually have, we'll put out and we'll make sure, call in through social media and through all the, we're gonna team up with the HOA, the, the BISD buses and make sure that all that's coordinated as we go through and we do these streets. These streets will have to be closed during the process. And so we'll have to make sure no on-street parking, all those things occur. So we'll coordinate that really well. And plus, a part of this proposal did include traffic control from the, from the contractor. So he's gonna provide the traffic control. Our people won't have to be involved in any of that. So they'll manage the whole thing. We're just looking for that timeline.
Oh, he's not, he's not here, is he?
What's that?
The, the contractor?
No, but no.
So counsel, the other thing I'm just gonna tell you is, again, I come from a city that had a billion-dollar street bill. And as much as the residents yelled and screamed that they wanted streets done, when we got to work and we started doing streets, guess what my number one complaint was? "Y'all got construction everywhere and I'm late." So we're going to manage the message. But I do want you to understand, some of this will happen during the school year. We're trying to force it toward the latter part of the school year as weather permits, but that, that window will run into some of that. So please just, you know, start spreading the word now.
Yes.
We'll get the word out. Councilmember Plunkett has a question.
Sorry? Just want to congratulate y'all on, I mean, the, I know you're sick of hearing me talking about streets. That's, that's always been one of my hot topics. And I, I just really impressed with the, the way y'all are looking at different ways of getting things done. And with the, the contract that we just did, you know, before, I mean, this is innovative stuff. And I, you know, thank you. Thank you very much.
It's gonna get better.
And I'll move to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett. We have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, staff, very much for what y'all do every day. We have, we have taken care of our agenda item already, and I'm ready for item number 12.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. We stand adjourned.
Run across the street. Hurry, you might catch him.